Good evening. I'd like to call the order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, July 11th, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Horsy?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the June 27th public hearing and the June 27th meeting. There are motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Jaya, seconded by Chandra. Any substantive corrections? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda. Next item is presentations and public input. We'll start with an update on the mayor council goals from city administrator Carol Mitten.
Thank you. In your packet, you have a form that's going to be updated every quarter for each of the 38 action steps that came out of the mayor council strategic goals for 2022 and 2023. So I'm just going to highlight a few of the items and then happy to answer any questions that I can afterwards. And then we also have Rich and Tim and Sheila here if you have any questions for them too. So there are six items that we expect to be addressed through the ARPA applications, either by outside groups or by city staff. And so those will be seeing some progress here in the next quarter or so. The first is funding community partners to address the root causes of gun violence, enhancing city programs that address the root causes of gun violence, fund and support community partners that promote health and wellness, gap funding for the ARPA Action Plan to support housing initiatives, pursue funds to rehabilitate dilapidated homes in targeted neighborhoods, and expand small business pandemic support to non-traditional Urbana businesses. So you've all established the ARPA priorities and then the RPC will be coming back in a little while, I don't know exactly when, with the whole application process to review. But these are things that will move forward once that is set in motion. There's two items that were funded in the FY23 budget that you, that the council passed a few weeks ago, and now we need to go through the hiring process. So first was to advance the action step identify and fund options that enhance current police investigative capacity. So you approved funding for two civilian positions in the police department, digital forensic specialist and an intelligence analyst. And then under infrastructure, the action step develop budget and strategy to take advantage of infrastructure grant funding in underserved areas. You approved a CD coordinator to work on grant funding in a variety of areas, including this, for community development department. And then finally, we're kicking off the Public Realm Study Downtown on July 18th, which will address the action step under economic recovery and development. That is to identify downtown destinations for Hotel Royer guests and develop a plan to address the safety and aesthetics of pedestrian paths of travel to those destinations. So we're really excited about this because the contractors for this work are Confluence. They're a group of landscape architects, planners, and urban designers, and the project for public spaces, and they are experts in placemaking. I know that Chris Evans and Chandra Bishop are on the advisory committee for this because downtown spans your wards. And interviews with the stakeholders will start next week. And then as the consultants collect materials to share with the public, we'll announce a dedicated website that they're putting together. So those are some of the highlights of the update report. And as I said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Carol or any of the department heads? Grace?
Thank you. Thanks for the update on all of this. I had a few questions in here. Some of them were like on goal, I don't know, 1, 3A, I guess, how to call it, on public safety and well-being. It says the status is this is included among the ARPA funding priorities. And you explained a list of those two. So I guess just my question is like, what is the this? Or I guess I mean, it sounds like you mean that this will be part of the whole ARPA allocation with RPC?
Yeah, this general action step is included among the ARPA funding priorities. And so then the application processes and development. So that's, that's the status of that particular one.
Thank you. And I have a few others, but I'm going to have to flip through my pages here unless, you might.
Any other questions? Chandra?
So the, the housing one, number 2, 1D, about the community introduction education meetings. I guess maybe this is for Sheila. What was the outcome of the meeting and maybe even the purpose of the meeting?
Could you say which one it is again?
Number 2, Strategic Area Housing, Strategy 1, Action Step D, Compliance with Housing Provisions.
Oh, that one actually came out of Exec.
Okay.
Yeah, because of the, that's out of the Office of Human Rights and Equity. So these are, Carla and Lamond have been going around and introduce, Carla's been introducing herself, but also doing some education with these various meetings just to, you know, to share even what the Human Rights Ordinance says, because not everybody knows exactly what it says. So if you'd like, I can get you some of the materials that they've been sharing, if that would be helpful.
Well, I just, I just wondered what the, I guess, the purpose and the outcome of those meetings. If, I mean, I can email Carla later.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's introductory slash educational.
Okay. So education about what the Human Rights Ordinance is as it relates to housing?
Yes.
Okay. And like housing, what's the word? For tenants and landlords, like just in general, what their rights are?
Yeah. And I think one of the things that Carla has been finding is that people don't fully understand, like what it takes to have, if you're, if you're going to bring a case, you have to, for instance, have actually applied. So not everybody, they might make a phone call and they hear something that they don't like. That doesn't give you the same kind of standing as if you actually had applied. Then you personally have been discriminated against as opposed to having heard something that doesn't sound right. So it's, she's trying to educate people about what it takes to, to actually be able to bring a complaint.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. Played out some of my questions here. So on 2, 1D, about enhanced compliance, I think that's, is that the one you were just asking about? Okay. So yes, that was similar questions about the education and enforcement. I heard that there was even, wasn't there letters that went out and stuff? That's what you're saying you'll provide to us at a later time? That went out to landlords and residents?
Yeah, there was, there was definitely a, a letter that had gone out to folks, to, to all landlords to help educate them too, because they're not all as familiar. And then there's been follow-up with that. And I can get a little summary of, of that effort, if you like.
Thank you. And I was wondering about, I think a lot of my other ones might be Tim questions. On 3, 1C, update city infrastructure codes. I saw this background talking about efforts that began in 2017, and I was wondering if there was anything recent in this reporting quarter that you had to report on. And particularly interested about the energy efficiency updates in there, too.
Yeah. So the, the code updates, we're focusing on the subdivision of land development code right now. In 2017, they started an effort to implement a manual practice, which tried to keep code items codified and technical items outside of that so that they, we could make the changes and updates. For example, I dot updates their technical standards annually, and really every four years, they overhaul that stuff. That, rather than keeping that stuff in the code, we're trying to pull some of that stuff out. But this effort began in 2017, and because it was trying to be kind of run by internal staff, it was just not able to get the, get over that hump to get to the point where we're ready to like bring that stuff back. So right now, we have a task force that we've been meeting every two weeks. It's a group from community development and public works getting together to go through these section by section, to try to get everybody up to speed and try to get these things to a point that we can bring these back to council for review and approval. Hopefully by the end of this calendar year is the target for that. For the building code and energy code updates, I believe that one is kind of being run out of buildings, building safety and community development is kind of leading that effort with our fire prevention services. And part of that, we have, there's, there's a, there's a, I think they're kind of at an internal review state on that right now. We've got, the, the state is waiting, I don't know that the state has yet adopted it, but the intention is, once the state adopts it, that we would basically be inclined to also adopt and enforce the updated building codes. We have, they have kind of brought some of that stuff around to public works for review and then community development for review, but I think it's at an internal staff review right now. And there will be additional community engagement, I think, on that one as well as the plan.
Thank you. My, some other questions for you, Tim, was on 3, 2D, on incorporate equity lens into priorities evaluation. And I saw here the update reply refers to the equals grant program, which I appreciate. And I think that was mostly covered in another one. I think that when we were working on this in small groups, what I had envisioned was more the systemic prioritization that you guys have really well laid out. And when you have, you know, a new assessment and you have data-driven prioritizations and you have an equity priority and things like exploring sewer line issues with the Dr. Ellis neighborhood. I just, I feel like that I see your department doing a lot of these things and I just, I didn't quite see it in here. And I just didn't know if we were on the same page for what this goal meant.
So we are doing, for, as far as like systematic decision-making for prioritization, we're trying to build that asset by asset. You know, essentially, I think when you guys came through the council training stuff that we did a little over a year ago, we had a decent system in place for kind of trying to prioritize roadway sections. We've since kind of developed one for sidewalks, and we'd like to continue doing that for every other one. The implementation of the equity lens on this is trying to not just base it solely on logistical engineering facts, but if there's something that seems very valuable that we, we discern from the EQL program that we can really incorporate as kind of an annual part of our process, that's not just the special EQL. I think that's the part of that that we're trying to figure out, is there a way to implement that into what I'm going to call our more like engineering-based decisions with that. So part of that is seeing, you know, if we, if we notice a trend in EQL, that is something we should really just be incorporating on an annual level of these systematic approaches.
Thank you. And then another question was 3, 3A about EV infrastructure. It says that looking at plans to install EV charging stations, which is awesome, in the downtown parking deck. I was just wondering, is that the, the big city two-level parking garage downtown?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. That's an exciting option. And then on 3, 3C, just wanted to comment about the staff bandwidth and just say that I would, I'm, you know, personally interested in getting back on this one and working with the, some U of I students possibly too on that one. I understand the staff bandwidth issue. I think that might have been all for Tim. I did have another quick one, maybe sorry, back to executive about C-DAP on 4, 1D. I was just wondering if there's been communication with, is it Patrick Thompson or Thomas, I believe, and talking about the procurement goals that we've had a little bit of discussion on?
So I got a, I'll take this opportunity to maybe address the email that I got from Chris Evans, I think it was over the weekend about this. And, and Darius and I actually met with Adonis and Rachel from Champagne this morning about the C-DAP program. And we're both kind of blown away by the resources that they have. And so let me just start by saying, before we even talk C-DAP, they have something that I know is going to make Tim super jealous, and maybe make, maybe make Sheila and Rich very jealous too. Each department has its own procurement person dedicated. That's the baseline. That's before C-DAP. And then Adonis's role is sort of like, he told me what his, what his title was, but I'm blanking on it right now. But he's sort of like the C-DAP specialist. So he supports each of those individuals in devising whatever is an appropriate, what do I want to say, expectation in the individual RFPs that are going out. And then he, Adonis as the specialist, works, once the bids come in and people say, okay, I'm going to address this particular C-DAP aspirational goal in this manner, then they do some checking about, you know, is, have they made a good faith effort when they put their proposal together? And then he helps monitor that also through the, through the execution of whatever that contract is. So they have a lot more resources than we do. So for us to have a program that looks like theirs, it's going to take a lot more resources. So where we need to get to is what can we do that's more incremental? And since we just kind of collected this information today, the other thing that we'd like to get, Adonis is, they have the same fiscal year schedule as we do. And so Adonis is going to be preparing a summary of the last fiscal year and, and how successful they've been. And they're, right now, at least if I understood him correctly, they're really just focused on construction, not non-construction. So they're, they're kind of easing into it the way that we had hoped to. So I think there's, there's more, there's, there's, there's a lot more that we can do, and we're just going to have to take this incrementally because we don't have the same level of resources as they do. So that's what I learned today.
Thank you. And then I think another one for exec slash community development is 4, 1E, merging existing business lists and create a business registry. So staff waiting on Urbana library to purchase this reference software. And I understand that that's not under direct control, but I was wondering if we had an idea of an expected timeline from the library?
I, I don't know, but I got the impression it was relatively imminent. I don't know, Sheila, if you know what the timeframe is for that. I, I think, I think, well, I'll find out. I'll find out what the, the schedule is.
Thank you. And then my last question comment was 4, 1B, survey local minority-owned businesses to understand challenges. And I appreciate the update here. And just wanted to remind us that we do have in the budget carried over from last year, funds kind of flagged for supporting Black Chamber of Commerce and BI Black Shambana, and that those could be potential partners in some of the surveying and some other kinds of process we've talked about of like grant writing or other support. So I just wanted to remind us that we have some funds kind of sitting there if staff feels that a third-party partnership could be helpful on some of these goals.
Well, and that's what we had put in the status update, that, that we have been talking to the Black Chamber about doing that very thing. So thank you. And I think what you can expect is when we bring the agreements with the, visit Champagne County and the Economic Development Corporation, that you'll also see one from the Black Chamber this year.
Thank you.
Chandra?
So on that same 4, 1B, it says, the survey to see how those results capture. Have, has the survey been distributed? Or is it still in the works?
No, we, we haven't reached, we, we would really like to work with the Black Chamber of Commerce on this. And we're waiting for the results of this Illinois Office of Minority Business Empowerment. They did a survey.
Oh, okay.
And we don't know how granular that is, or whether it'd be useful to us or not. So once we see what they were able to glean, then we'll know what, you know, what kind of gap there might be in information.
Gotcha. Okay. And then I had another question. Under housing, improving housing quality, 2, 2A, how, applying for ARPA funding for a roof repair replacement program. So we know that ARPA is a one-time funding source. How, if this is going to be a program, how is this going to be sustainable? And why only roofs?
Now, that one Sheila's going to say.
It is a program that we will be requesting funds from the ARPA funding. It is the one call that we get on a regular basis, that we don't have any other funds that can help address it. So if we can get funding for one or two or three years, whatever that happens to be, that's more than what we have now. And with roofing costs and construction costs going up, our last bid that we had on a roof came in at $13,000. So it's just extremely expensive for low-income families to be able to put a new roof on.
And then also, the EV charging stations, I don't know very much about the SEJA Act, but is that, is there incentive for private businesses also to get them to install EV as well?
For the EV charging stations, that's a rebate program that I believe they're eligible for as well. The idea behind what we're doing with that now is putting something downtown to kind of set an example and set, you know, somewhere that we have this stuff and something that's visible. And then I think that the next effort beyond that is kind of doing targeted marketing and thing of those efforts to kind of push people towards these incentive programs.
Okay. Because I, I wonder like, if, if you all thought of doing like a, like a, take a look at the city, like where would charging stations be best placed? And then, you know, encouraging those businesses at those locations to say, you know, we've mapped it out and it, it would do so well here, and blah, blah, blah.
Right. And I don't know if we'll, we'll get to that step or not, but I certainly know the idea is to kind of do some targeted marketing to, to try to push people towards this program. That may be exactly what we do. I just don't know how it'll look yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Carol. Next, we'll move on to public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes, up to five minutes to speak.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? I am Carrie Vogus. And to start off, I am a Champagne County resident. I have an Urbana address. And I also am the cap and the jail superintendent of the jail. I was unable to make the last meeting, so I wanted to make sure I came in, introduced myself, and also gave you a little bit of information of how things have been since we met, you guys met last week. I know we're talking about a special permit tonight, not specifically the jail build, but the actual permit. But I want to tell you some reasons as to why it's so important that we get this passed and we start to move forward. We have been, I have been part of the county for 19 years, and I have been the jail superintendent since 2014. And we've been fighting this battle for almost over a decade now, trying to get something in place that is more humane, something that provides the accurate space and location. I want to tell you that I am somebody who believes in resources in the community, and I believe that we need to have both. We have to have not only the community resources and options out there for the individuals to help them prior to coming to jail, but also we have to have a safe location and a place in order to house someone that must be incarcerated due to their charge and their crime. This morning, when I walked in the jail, we have a total of 314 individuals that are incarcerated under Champagne County. And take in consideration, some of those individuals have been arrested by Urbana Police Department themselves. Out of that 314, 149 of them are now housed out of county. I know that's going to be money out of my pocket as a taxpayer, and I think that goes for everyone saying here that somehow it's going to affect us all. This affects the, the lawyers that are having to go see their clients. Unfortunately, their clients are unable to see their lawyers as easily and accessible as normal. It's affecting their families. But you have to keep in mind, the purpose and the reason that we're doing this is because the downtown facility, Urbana currently has two facilities under its jurisdiction right now, or its property, that houses individuals. We were able to last week close the downtown jail, thank God, because it was no longer safe to have officers working in there or inmates living in there. No one wants to live with cockroaches. No one wants to live with doors that just pop open. And I'm here because of the fact that these people, we have so many people that show up to meetings that want to talk about individuals and, and, you know, not incarcerating them, but we don't look at the fact that when the people do come to jail that are required to stay with us, they still deserve humane conditions. They still deserve to be classified and to be housed appropriately. And I think that that is, that's what I'm here to talk to you guys about, I guess, is to make sure you guys understand the purpose and the need for this build and the amount of effort and time, not just from me, but from many people that are sitting behind me today, to try to provide something that is going to be better for them in the future. I, I give kudos to Sheriff Harmon and to the rest of the admin team for getting the place closed last week when I couldn't be there. But this isn't the best situation. We want to have them local. We want to have them in a better condition, in a better environment. All we're doing is consolidating. When I hear people talk about this being an expansion, please don't, that is not what this is. We are actually, right now, the group has provided less bed space. Is that a perfect scenario? No. Because as of right now, you have 149 people out of county. The satellite jail only holds 182. We have to remember that with the type of violence that we're seeing in the community that we speak about at every council meeting and county board meeting, that we're talking about the fact that the violence is going up. We need to find ways in the community to help that, but we also need to be able to keep our people and our citizens in this county safe while they are currently pending their crimes. So I just ask that tonight, I will be up here to, to answer any questions you guys have when it, time comes. Please ask. I'm here to help you. I've been doing this job for a long time. I'm certified to run a jail, and I know sometimes that's things you guys don't know. You guys have questions that maybe I can answer for you, and I'm here for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I am Jen Straub, resident of Urbana, and I also represent District 9 on the Champagne County Board. I attended my first county board meeting when called to do so by build programs, not jails. So it's ironic that I sit here today, or stand, actually. I wasn't prepared to stand. That's not what we do. On the other side of this issue, it's one that's been kicked down the road for decades, or for over a decade. But I found that I'm sure all of you have found as well, that sometimes being an activist is a lot more fun than being a policymaker. I lost a lot of sleep on this jail vote. I didn't come into public office to build jails, but the right choices are often the hardest ones. And ultimately, I have a statutory obligation to maintain a county jail, a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that our county isn't sued over the conditions in the downtown jail. And to be very clear, these are conditions in which I would not board my family pets. And a moral obligation to keep the folks in our custody safe. Meanwhile, the board has spent and pledged to spend millions of dollars for its violence prevention, housing, utility assistance, small businesses, and more. As highlighted in the editorial in Sunday's News Gazette, the county has met the established requirements for this special use permit. As a taxpayer of both Urbana and Champagne County, I would hate to lose valuable tax dollars in litigation on this issue. I would encourage my city council to move on and prioritize helping our most vulnerable citizens with the ARPA funds awarded to our city. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Hi, I'd like to address the council. Before I do, I'd like to request minor accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act. If I could have just 30 seconds to maybe ask the attorney and explain the situation confidentially. Thank you.
Hi, city council. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I'm Sarah Nixon, a resident of Urbana, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. And I'm speaking to Agenda Item J.
this evening. And I'm speaking to Agenda Item J, an ordinance approving special use permit for Octapharma Plasma Donation Center in Urbana that you're being asked to approve. I met a young woman last year who paid her monthly rent by donating as often as she could to the plasma donation center in Urbana. So I'm speaking not for myself in a direct way, but on behalf of the many miserable, the great many miserable people in Urbana who are being exploited here in our community by this plasma, plasma donation business. I'd like to begin by pointing out that there are some serious misrepresentations, also known as lies, in the ordinance draft. So first off, the term donation. If you haven't given that any thought, and if you need me to remind you, the Oxford Dictionary describes donation as something that is given usually to a charitable organization, and it is freely given, and it is a gift. You receive nothing in return. So that term is false. Plasma donation is actually a sale. It's a business. People sell their plasma who are trying to make ends meet. And there's a whole rhetoric and propaganda that goes along with it that calls them a plasma hero or similar terms. What I observed, what I witnessed, was that the plasma donation becomes something akin to an addiction or perhaps a habit. The young woman I met was doing this, as I said, twice a week. There is a survivor of chronic plasma donation who has shared his story online. He goes by the name of David, and he shares that people who make these donations are told there are no health impacts, no health, no long-term effects. And he shares that that's not the case. There are a number of long-term effects to frequent and regular, you know, extraction of your blood. He mentions side effects like being dizzy and tired, and that's fine if it happens just, you know, once a year. But these are people who are going in as often as they can to, to gain some money. He explained that plasma keeps blood in our body. An example he provided is if you get stabbed on the way home from donating plasma, you'll bleed out before you get to the hospital. That's one of the roles of plasma. Keeps our blood inside our body. And he pointed out, in fact, in many cases, the plasma business, businesses pay in cash, so the people are vulnerable and people do get robbed on the way home. He also mentioned your skin starts losing its elasticity. He mentioned lesions that form on the outside of your, your arms that look like bed sores and scabs. He mentions long-lasting pain in the spot where you get your frequent needle, needles inserted. His arms were jerking with sharp pain for years after his experience as a donor. And he expounds about the, the idea that he's a hero. He's not a hero. And he said, none of the other people there are heroes either. They're desperate people who... Is that time? Okay. So I would ask the council to please, if you haven't visited the Octapharma location, and if you haven't given this deep thought, please consider the real negative impact on people who live in Urbana who are actually the ones who are selling their plasma, not donating. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we have some emails that...
Hi. I'm Dennis Roberts. I have served on the city council before, and tonight, my name has been proposed to join the Historic Preservation Commission, so I appreciate that nomination, should you approve it. And I've heard the comments from some of the public about the county jail issue and the permit. A good friend of mine in my neighborhood is Chris Storey. He also serves on the county board. I've talked to him for quite a long time about, you know, the process of trying to improve the jail circumstances for people who are incarcerated. And, you know, it's been a long struggle for the county board. We do want to have the best kinds of programs available for people to avoid being in the jailhouse, but if they are in the house, they should have, they should have conditions that are humane and appropriate for their staying there. So I, I would hope that the council wouldn't stifle the opportunity for the county board to finally close the issue about appropriately handling the overflow and the loss of the ability to store anybody in the downtown area. So I just thought I'd mention that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have several emails to be read.
Yes. This one's long. I can't see if the timer's going. It'll go as long as I have. It's from Alan Max Axelrod, who says they've been exposed to COVID and won't be in attendance. Please read their comment tonight. "Champaign, Urbana has organized street crime, and neither the Democrats nor Republicans are addressing it transparently with our community. This open seat, our secret is costing our lives, costing the lives of our youth, and solutions being pursued indicate that people haven't talked to folks involved in organized street crime or studied local organized street crime. I have talked to several involved in organized street crime. I'm studying this issue, and youth will say things to community members that they absolutely never would say to police, thus limiting their awareness. Just as I have met with Mayor Dev in Champaign about homelessness to ensure that well-documented and supported government agencies' standards are being, are pursued, I have remarks for the community in this regard." Former MS-13 gang member Gerard Olopas said in 2018, "We all know that it's important to get kids out of gangs, but we forget that they aren't set up to succeed once they leave. For the past month, I have commented before both city councils about housing insecurity being related to youth seeking empowerment and financial security by participating in organized street crime. This isn't an ideological statement, not a nonprofit truism, but something I have seen myself." It is also from research published over a decade ago by the Office of Justice Programs, and I quote, "Youth join gains, gangs to protect, for protection, enjoyment, respect, money, or because a friend is in a gang. A youth came to my home today after being released from jail. This isn't the first time. In the past, he conveyed to me the simple logic that most gun violence is due to street debt. Think about it for a second. If you don't have the legal system to enforce a business contract and are involved in street business, you are going to use street methods to get your money. You've got no other choice if you can't afford to be philanthropic. He knows this because he participates in this business and has said that he wants to leave. Unfortunately, Champaign, Urbana doesn't have the economic support or security framework to make this happen. Years ago, this youth was my neighbor, and I drove this youth to the library when I realized he didn't read that well. We made a deal that I would get him snacks from the library café for each book he read, regardless of the reading level for the book. Almost all of that progress is lost. Now he faces juvenile life sentence, which may put him away for six years. He asks for car rides from time to time, and every time he leaves the vehicle, we say to each other, stay safe. Before this latest arrest, we've talked about the difficulties and how we could, how he could get out of the community, or how he could get out, and the community doesn't have the support needed to make that happen. His life and well-being would be under threat if he left his current street business relationship. A component of racism is that people have separated how gangs 100 years ago operate and how they do today. It is near identical with elements of it sometimes surfacing on social media. Impoverished kids are offered money and esteem to participate in a gang. They are usually delivering products that they are also provided, which has them dependent, if not outright addicted to these very products. The pay nowadays, perversely, is less than the minimum wage, but they are recruited before they are legally allowed to work. Our underfunded social services and insufficient wages are to blame. You don't see youth from wealthy families getting involved in gangs nearly as often as youth from impoverished and struggling families. That is a clear sign that this is a monetary issue that organized street crime is exploiting. I have no love for the managerial class within our organized street crime, and they have our community members under their thumb." This former MS-13 gang member Gerard Olopas said, "90% of kids who try to leave a gang but don't have another support system in place fail. 70%. I realize that the only way to succeed is in getting kids out of gangs and keeping kids out of gangs. That is to create an environment to support them every step of the way. As always, there is public government-funded information on how to meaningfully address the problem. This is the case, this, in this case, organized crime. The information is provided from the Office of Justice Programs National Gang Center, as well as the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention. They have dedicated resources on group violence intervention to date, and they have 82 programs related to their efficiency, as well as the appropriate age ranges. While many of the programs presume that one can find gainful employment or prevent people from participating by focusing on non-economic means, the economic component requires further emphasis. Think about what it would take for one to accept retaliation, including beatings, death threats, or hits called on them, coupled with social alienation if they manage to survive. That is how most, that is why most trying to leave organized street crime fail. It is too much without programs specifically addressing the safety, economic wellness, and social components, to name a few, but especially the economic one. Such funds are not unique or extreme. Central Illinois does a version of this with landlords in Springfield via their landlord risk mitigation fund. This is to help end chronic homelessness. We need to consider a risk mitigation fund for exiting organized street crime in addition to programs provided from the Office of Justice Programs. Lastly, the mother of this youth has been housing insecure for years. We can get her housed by raising $1,750 by July 20. I hope the Angel Donor Fund from the township will help. The mother says that this is out of, that this is out of money, and it is very frustrating if true. Regardless, please reach out to me if you are willing to donate to our Cash App, which is pretty bit Clarissa One to make that happen. I wanted to come to council to sign the Cash App. However, I have to isolate possible recent COVID exposure. Thank you for your labor and stay safe.
Yeah, we'll set the timer from here on out.
Was it not? I was waiting for the timer.
And we can always incorporate these into the record. Shandra, do you have some to read?
This is from Julie Watkins of Ward Five. She asks if it be read tonight at council. "I want to thank Shandra Bishop for asking for town hall about the jail question. I am distressed. There is no consensus, and the issue wasn't kept in committee. If there isn't a consensus, I think that's a sign that people who are resisting it don't think it will help, and there are other needs being unmet. Yes, there are increased arrests. I don't think we can arrest ourselves out of an economic problem. Lots of people have said that the job situation, people unable to make rent, and people evicted are all affecting how many people are getting arrested. I think it would be cheaper to keep a family in a home with rent help than have people arrested when their lives go crazy and someone in, in their family react in a way that results in a re, arrest. The most safe neighborhoods have the most services, housing, security, and jobs that pay enough. The jail is going to be a long process. I think the city and the county and everyone else involved needs to do the work that needs to be done to get consensus. Explaining how the procedure was followed doesn't address why people are upset, and I think that will make government people's jobs harder down the line when public trust is damaged. There were sporadic audio problems in the livestream last week. When I was listening, I was hearing what sounded like contradictions. The sheriff said he couldn't refuse when people are remanded, but he can't force whoever it is to take people, but he can't force whoever it is to take the people where they should be if they are unfit for trial. There are obviously gray areas he can pursue. He passed the buck to the courts. Maybe UPD is also contributing by how many they arrest. To Urbana residents who are struggling, or people like me who know my neighbors are struggling, it's upsetting to know that the area governments are spending so much on policing courts and jails. Because I know county and city and township all talk to each other and work with each other. This is everyone's problems. Making a speech about policy and not the city's job when there isn't a local consensus makes two bad impressions. One, someone is passing the buck. Two, the system is designed this way to spread the blame for controversial decisions. You are making your jobs harder by not doing everything you can to get consensus, and that includes consensus between council members, when some of those council members can point to research that shows the carceral approach doesn't achieve its stated goals. Families in distress is an increased arrests risk and an increased COVID risk. Please do what you need to get consensus and do stuff that actually works, that actually achieves your goals. Thank you for your, your consideration of this matter. Julie Watkins.
Okay. Shandra, or Shabice.
The letter I have here is from Paul Debevick. "Urbana City Council, special use permit for jail improvement by the numbers. 270, section of Illinois statutes that places the responsibility for a jail in a county. 11, number of years between 2011 National Institutes of Correction report, which found Champaign County jail conditions deplorable, and closure of the, of the downtown jail. 58,329, number of votes in Champaign County 2016 referendum against sales tax increase to fund general county building maintenance, one quarter of which to be directed to jail improvements. 11, people who spoke to county board on November 11, 2018 in opposition to the $20 million consolidation plan out of a population of 209,448. 9, number who spoke to county board on October 24, 2019 in opposition to 2019 $47 million consolidation plan out of a population of 209,922. 3, number of county board jail facility committee meetings in the fall 2021, which allowed public input. 4, number of individuals who addressed county board jail facilities committee in their, in their fall 2021 meetings. 11, number who spoke to county board on number 8, November 18, 2021 in opposition to 2021 $20 million consolidation plan out of an estimated population of 205,943. 45, estimated number of county board members who have served on jail policy committees. 313, capacity of downtown before closure and satellite jails. 216, capacity of planned satellite facility. 2 million, cost in 2022 for Champaign County to house jail inmates in other counties. 2 million, estimated cost in 2023 for Champaign County to house jailmate, jail inmates in other counties. 1, number of county board members who voted on November 2018, November 18, 2021 to oppose satellite jail update. 0, number of Urbana Planning Commission votes on June 9, 2022 against special use permit satellite jail update. 0, number of Urbana council members with the authority to make county jail policy. Regards, Paul Debevick.
This is from... This is from Brandy McCoy. "Good evening. Public documents state that a public hearing was held by the Urbana Planning Commission about the expansion of the satellite jail in Urbana. I lived within five minutes of the proposed expansion and received no notice of such a public hearing. Thirteen households allegedly received mailers about the topic, but surely more than just 13 households will be impacted. There was no public input on this issue at the public hearing, which for such a significant proposal seems deplorable. I believe the lack of participation is due to a lack of notification, awareness, and understanding that, than a lack of objection or a lack of caring by Urbana residents. I urge the council to table this issue until more information has been provided to the public and council members so that a truly educated decision can be made. Thank you, Brandy McCoy."
Does anyone else wish to address the council? Last call for public input.
I, I have a letter that I'm going to read.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, James. Sorry.
I don't believe this is from my ward, but I haven't heard it read yet. This is from Peggy Patton. "Hello. From what I understand, the proposed jail addition meets the legal requirements that govern issuances..." that govern issuances of a permit. I have long had serious reservations about jail expansion in our community and nation for years. I had the opportunity to share that view with our county board during the many years process they took to consider the issue. The responsibility of deciding the future of the county jail rests with the county board. I believe they took time in making a decision with opportunities for public input along the way. The Urbana City Council should not undermine that effort by holding up the issue of a permit, basically an en-run of the process. If the roles were reversed and another public body attempted to interfere with the policy decision made by the Urbana City Council after a long deliberation, we would consider it an unfair practice. Please vote to the issue, the permit, at your upcoming meeting and continue the critical work of mental health supports, poverty prevention programs, and criminal justice reform that will make our jails obsolete. Thank you for your service, Peggy Patton. I would also, um, like to mention that I, I received another email from Claudia Lindhoff with, which is really long, which I don't think I would read into the record tonight, but we should add to the record, uh, if the clerk has a copy of it. And then, um, I still wanna ma, I wanna make sure that the chair of the county board's letter from last week is also included in the record, Kyle Patterson's note to city council, uh, from the, the board chair.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further public input, we will move on to council input and communications, and each council member has three minutes to speak if you wish. Mary Alice.
Um, I just wanted to make a comment. I know that we all receive, uh, emails from various constituents, and my personal policy is not to read them unless they specifically state, please read these. Um, so I just wanted to let the public know that I have received about five more emails from my own constituents, um, who would like a vote of yes on the special use permit, just as a general summary. Thank you.
Grace.
Uh, I would just say that I agree with that, and I've just been reading the ones that have been specifically asked to read, and was wondering the same thing, if that's what the understanding and expectation was.
Any other comments? Okay. Oh, Sharice.
Um, before we move on to this, the issue about the special use permit, I, I think there's something, I went home last week and I did some research regarding, uh, our, our, our business in this whole thing, which is basically to just issue a permit, um, because Urbana is the county seat. And Urbana being the county seat means that we just happen to be the city that happens, that has, uh, the county business in it. That the county has their business that they have to take care of, and we have our business that we take care of. Our business right now just means that we are to, we need to issue a special permit so that the county, uh, jail where people are housed during trial while awaiting arraignment or while, um, sleeping something off, maybe. Uh, but that is, that is, the, our only business with this is that we provide that, that special permit so that they can get on with their business and try to provide a humane habitation for people to be in, to, to be housed while they're doing that. And for me, this is not a political thing. It is more of, um, something that I feel is necessary because I think it's important that anyone that has to be housed in, in jail or incarcerated in any way have the most humane conditions that they can possibly have. And if they have a, 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 a bad experience with law enforcement, that is something that will remain with them for the rest of their lives. And being black, um, I kind of understand how that can happen. So my whole thing is to try to alleviate or at least ameliorate that issue. And I feel that the, we have to have faith in what the county has to do, what their ba, what their business is, and, um, try to keep things as humane as possible for those who are unfortunate enough to have to be incarcerated during any period of time. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other council comments? James.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks to everyone who comes out and provides input to us every week. Um, it is, is valuable. Engagement is very important. I spent six years on the county board, and I can tell you, when we were discussing the plan for the jail, we had very good attendance and public input. People came out. But many of the things that we did that, that were also very impactful on the citizens of the county, there was, there was nobody in the seats. And, and it, it's always better to have people in the seats, even if they may not agree on what we're doing, or we may not agree on how we're doing it. Um, but engagement is always better. Um, I, I will, um, be supporting the special use permit, and I stated those reasons at our last meeting. Um, but I will also say that I think, from my experience with being on the county board, I think as this plan goes forward, in whatever form that it goes forward, I think, uh, the, the things that we've heard about, um, public engagement, about sharing the plan, about talking about it, are still relevant, even if, if this passes tonight. That communication should still go on. And the reason why is, um, the, the, the project, if it goes forward, has a capacity for programs that are much needed, that were the things we spent a lot of time talking about, uh, when I was involved with the county board. And that is where I think, um, the ongoing input of the community, um, can be most effective. Um, I don't, I don't believe that myself or the individual person in the community has, uh, a lot of input on how to design, um, the appropriate size of jail, the size, the number of jail beds, and how those, how that is laid out, and how it is best managed. That is something that there are experts to provide guidance on, but there certainly, we are certainly, uh, relevant, and it's important for us to talk about how we support individuals who are incarcerated and provide programs, uh, to engage them, um, to educate them, uh, to prepare them for re-entry, uh, when, when that, when that time comes. The other thing I wanna say is, um, we have to constantly, um, be on the state, uh, for their responsibility in this situation. Part of the, we heard, part of the problem is, um, the appropriate resources can take months, sometimes years, to become available. And we, we, we are responsible in Champaign County for holding prisoners that are not, that would be better served in those resources. And so we need to keep pressure on our, uh, state government officials to make sure that gets addressed. Thank you.
Any other council comments?
Okay, we'll move on to reports, or unfinished business. There is none. And we'll move to reports of standing committees, and that will be the committee of the whole, and that was chaired by James Quisenberry.
Uh, so first up, we have the ordinance number twenty, two thousand, or, two zero two-two dash zero six, dash zero two-six, an ordinance approving a special use permit, uh, Champaign County Jail consolidation at five oh-two South Lyman Avenue, Plan Case two four four nine dash SU dash twenty-two.
So we have Kat Trotter to give an update, and then I'd like to invite anyone, um, representing the applicants to join Kat at the table and have a seat, so you're available to answer questions.
Diane, if I could say something real briefly, um, at our committee of the whole meeting, and this is my fault, um, we normally ask applicants to join, uh, our staff member at the table, and I failed to be clear about that opportunity, and unfortunately, our applicants stood for about forty minutes answering questions, so I, I apologize for that misunderstanding.
We all had a role in that, and so we sincerely apologize, but please join. Just make sure when you do speak, you're speaking into the microphone, and we may need to bring one more chair over. Oh. Okay, go ahead, Kat.
All right. I don't have a whole lot to add from last week. You all received a supplementary memo from me, which included more information from Champaign County on the public outreach that has been conducted, uh, as a part of this consolidation process. Um, I also brought digital copies of the floor plan and public safety master plan. Um, those were sent out to you in an email on Friday, but I can pull them up today if that would be helpful.
Any questions for Kat? Is there a motion to get this item on the floor? Oh, okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Um, thank you all for being here to answer questions. Um, I was wondering, um, in your public input that you mentioned that it's hard for clients to see their lawyers and families, uh, which I totally understand, and I was wondering if in-person visits were allowed, because my understanding would have said it's only video, um, meetings currently.
Um, the attorneys, actually, it's different for every jail, so I can't speak for Kankakee, Macon. Um, every jail has a different procedure for attorneys. Um, I do know right now they're traveling. Um, I spoke to several private attorneys today specifically, um, because I was coming here and I wanted to hear if they had any more input. Um, and it's a challenge for them to get up there, go an hour and a half away, go an hour away. Um, Macon does have an opportunity for them to do over video, so they don't have to leave their office, but in most cases, they're having to travel right now, um, in order to see their clients.
Thank you. And could you, um, explain what it is in the Champaign County jail currently for visiting for family, uh, and/or attorneys?
So currently, they're video-only, and that's because of, since COVID started, public health has not allowed us to do in-person yet. Um, and with the uptick recently, we still don't feel comfortable to do that. Um, so we're still by video. They can do it from home, or they can do it in-person, come on site and use the video visitation kiosk. Um, and they also, the attorneys, pastors, things of that nature can still come in, but they're non-contact. And if the attorney comes in and they need contact, they're required to wear a mask, um, in order to see their client.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Chris.
And Sheriff Dustin goes, oh, no, not that guy again. Um, I do have one question, Sheriff. Uh, what, who determines and why aren't we using electronic monitoring and ankle bracelets more to alleviate some of this out-of-count, out-of-county housing?
The captain may be able to better speak with that because she knows more of a history.
So right now, we use the home incarceration program currently, which we call EHD, for those individuals that have been sentenced that we feel would be better suited in the community versus doing a county sentence in the jail. Um, we do not have a pre-trial detention monitor that is set up with the county that can do twenty-four-hour monitoring at this point. Um, they have it when required by a judge, so we have DUI ankle bracelets, we have domestic violence ankle bracelets that are currently being used as a, as a way of being out on bond. But the pre-trial, and remember that the majority right now, we are at almost eighty-nine to ninety percent felony pre-trial right now. So if they're not leaving the jail, in which I work regularly with Julia Reitz and the state's attorney on getting people out that can go out, majority of them have high enough bonds, they would not be put out on a pre-trial bracelet at this point. But we do, we do keep that in, in mind whenever we have someone that we need to get out.
Right. So what I'm hearing you say is generally if somebody is sentenced to the county jail time, that's when they get the bracelet.
That is correct. Yes. It's part of a sentence.
Yeah, okay. Um, this is for, uh, um, the county executive. Um, today, there was a lawsuit filed against, uh, the state of Alabama for using COVID funds for jail building. Do you have any sense of where the county will be in relation to the five million of ARPA funds that you're trying to use to build this jail? Will that be disallowed in the future, or do you know?
I, this is the first I've heard about, I'm sorry, this is the first I've heard about that. I'll have to check into that.
Okay. Thank you. No, no question.
Any other questions for the applicants? Is there a motion?
I will move ordinance number twenty-two-two-zero-six-zero-two-six, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Champaign County Jail consolidation at five oh-two South Lyman Avenue, Plan Case twenty-four forty-nine SU twenty-two for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Further discussion? Mary Alice? So I kind of said my piece last time. Um, I guess the, what I'd like to ask my fellow council members is to really look at the three different questions that we have in front of us legally that we are supposed to use to evaluate a special use permit. I know that when we have the conversation about public welfare, um, there are two potential definitions of public welfare. So my question is, does it meet either of those two? And my argument is yes. It does meet both of those definitions for public welfare. One external to the jail activities and one internal to the jail activities. As we have heard from many people in the public, many of the different people who support the, the jail, this is about humane treatment of people who are currently in the jail system. That is beneficial to their life quality. So I realize that there are people on the council who are morally against incarceration. I understand that. I think it is important, however, that we look at what we are supposed to be using as the criteria to evaluate the special use permit, and if you have some kind of moral, um, if you have something that just won't allow you to vote for it, then I suggest that you vote present.
Further discussion? Grace.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank everyone for the input that's been shared and for everyone, um, attending. I think that it's been a, a difficult and informative and, I think, respectful as possible discussion. Um, for some of my points, I think for, I've been getting told a lot of times that it's not our place to undermine the county in this decision. Um, I just don't see how that's what this is. Um, this is a special use permit, which is our decision, and the question we're being asked. If it wasn't up to Urbana City Council for the special use permit, we wouldn't have it here on the floor right now. Um, I understand that this is a county decision to do the expansion or consolidation and to operate the jail and the sheriff's office. I absolutely understand that. Um, it is our job as council members of Urbana to evaluate the special use for this proposal in Urbana. Um, I think that it's not unprecedented for us to consider something thoroughly when it's a special use permit. Uh, this is what we do. It's our job to understand and evaluate the special use based on certain criteria and how it will affect the public that we represent. Uh, we have examples of this, um, like when the township came to us with the California Avenue properties. We took the time for public input, awareness, and engagement in educating the public on what was going on. Um, I think that was even delayed maybe several weeks. I don't quite remember. Um, but we discussed special conditions for approval, which is within the council right in decision-making, um, such as a fence in the play area, handicapped accessibilities. We even asked details on the leasing agreements and security options. Um, it feels like there's a, there's a double standard being met here, that now this special use permit, we're not supposed to consider those things, when to me, I think that this one is even more so deserving of consideration than some of the other things, that we do give consideration to a lot of these things, and we have the right to have special conditions for approval. Um, I think that being told that it's not our place, um, isn't quite right in the situation. I understand that separation, and again, this is the permission for the special use in the city of Urbana, which is our business and the reason why we're voting on it. Um, again, I think this jail is a big issue, and it needs more consideration, public awareness, and understanding for our process, for the city. Um, I hear the county saying that they've done a lot of this. I'm saying that I haven't seen it presented well enough to the city for the special use. Um, I think the understanding, the proposed special use is an important part of this process. We decide as council to approve, not approve, or approve with certain conditions for a special use. If I don't sufficiently understand the proposal, how can I make that decision? There may be certain conditions that could be met or that likely may already be met, but I can't make a good recommendation without fully understanding the justification for the proposal that we currently have. So I need more information, presentation, and public engagement on this. Um, the public wasn't provided any more information. engagement on this. The public wasn't provided any more information since last week, since that letter from the county exec wasn't included on our website. I didn't see the floor plans up there. There may have been a roundabout way to get to it, but I didn't find it. I found that that letter from the county executive was helpful in an attempt, but also not really helpful for me in clearly laying out the rationale for this proposal. It was a lot of agendas and meetings to sift through without the context and connection to why it's relevant to this issue. I don't quite understand why the county board members would put in effort to individually lobby and contact us privately instead of making all of those points clearly laid out for the public. That's not what I feel comfortable with, and I would like more thorough presentation, like in a packet presentation form, and understanding of this proposal so that I can make an informed decision and justify to the public why I would vote to approve this special use. I would appreciate the opportunity to ask questions about some of the information that we've recently been given, sent on email and in this letter that hopefully will be in the packet, such as actions that were taken by the recommendations from the Racial Justice Tax Force in 2017. We were sent that document, but my questions would be, how does it relate to this? What recommendations were taken into this jail proposal? They recommended things on community relations, pre-trial processes, fees, police practices, housing and restorative justice. So I feel like I have been sent some more information, but also without the context of how it fits into this decision. And that's what I have been asking for and why I wanted to keep it in committee to have a little bit more time, but unfortunately, that wasn't supported. I understand our special use decision here, and I think that also the background context is important. The carceral system has serious issues with racial and economic disparity that wreaks havoc on society. There is clear statistical racial disparity in arrest and sentencing throughout our county. I think that that does come into some importance here. If this were a proposal for a coal-fired power plant, I would take issue with the expansion of outdated and limited infrastructure of fossil fuels and the impact on the community. So I think that there is an important context here that makes it even more important to justify this plan because it is something that has such a big impact on the community. I think that this is not unsimilar in some ways, and I think the context is important. I definitely see the need for this. I support closing the downtown jail and having humane and improved conditions for the people who have to be detained in these confined settings. And I see quite a few positive features to this proposal. I don't yet understand what input was considered and how it was reflected in this proposal and some of the details and benefits of the new facility specifically. I don't think the public has been provided enough information in a clear and concise manner to understand this proposal and the special use in Urbana. I appreciate the efforts that have been taken by the county in this tough decision and generating this design. I'm not against the entire plan. Like I said, I see some value in it. What I'm asking for is for it to be clearly laid out for the public and explain the rationale for this proposal in a really clear presentation of the facility improvements and justification for the plan. I feel that I have not done my due diligence to understand and justify supporting this for myself or for the public. So I do not feel that I can support this at this time due to the process and lack of background context for something that I think is a really big decision and based on the criteria of being injurious to the public that I don't feel comfortable that we've explored enough. Thank you.
Further discussion? James?
Yes, as I stated in council comments, I intend to support this. And I want to, I want to go back to-
James, could you speak into your mic a little bit?
Okay, is that better?
Better, thank you.
So, so one of the things that I want to reiterate is, one of the ILPP study, which we do hear a lot about, one of the important things that it recommended is classification. We hear that term. It may not be clear what that means. That means identifying those individuals who are going to be incarcerated into different groups and, and serving them based on what those groups' needs might be. We've heard about that with regard to gender. We've heard about that with regard to mental health. We've heard about that with regard to inmates with health, health needs. We've also heard about it with regard to inmates that maybe can't be housed together because of a threat of violence between them or, or other means. That's what the classification recommendation from ILPP was about. That means having sufficient space and sufficient organization to manage those different populations that are identified. And we don't have the capabilities to do that at this point. And that's one of the reasons why this building of a smaller in-jail at the satellite facility, a smaller total number of beds, but the appropriate kind of beds is important. I do think the question of, you know, what's our responsibility and what's the county board's responsibility, I don't, I don't think it's a good example, I will say to the public, that I don't think it's a good example to talk about the conversation about the Colorado properties at Urbana City Council is a good example of a double standard because this body that you're looking at right now is the town board, is fiduciarily responsible for the township. And so we both, we have two hats that we wear, but that, that's, that's us both times. That's not a different group undermining another group. The county has invested a lot of time, people, people have invested a lot of time in this discussion. It's an ongoing discussion. We're not at the, the final answer. It needs to keep going, as I said in my, in my comments. The county still needs to continue to educate all of the county constituents what's going on with this plan, needs to continue to talk about programs and, and serving the inmates under their care. But I intend to vote for the special use permit because I believe the county has met the terms that the special use permit requires. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
It's four ayes, three noes. That motion passes. Thank you all for attending. Next, we'll go on to, oh, sorry, go ahead, James.
Yes, the next item, ordinance number 2022-06-023, an ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter 3, liquor was moved to city council for approval, so that I think constitutes the motion. And so, Madam Mayor, if you-
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Are there any further questions on this particular proposal? Grace, I will let you know, Grace emailed us today requesting information on the 75 liquor license holders, their addresses and the different types of licenses they have, so we can do a spreadsheet and we'll send that around to all of you tomorrow. Okay. So we have a motion by James, seconded by Jaya. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Reports of special committees, there is none. Reports of officers. This, we had actually listed as a discussion item is the reference to the resolution that was initially proposed a couple of weeks ago with the budget related to spending by the police department, but potentially other departments on various issues. We have heard in the past couple of, well, past couple of days from both Mary Alice and Chris, they've worked on some language specifically related to various types of technology and how it's used. The whole staff that needs to review this hasn't had a chance yet to review it. We just got the language on, on Thursday. But it became clear as we started to go through it that there, a lot of the terms are, and the topics are much more complex than they might seem from the surface. And a lot of questions were raised, and it became clear to us that we need to work, you know, a great deal more with the council in terms of getting all of this clarified. So in order to get a, craft a good policy and actually include all of the council members, we'd like to schedule meetings with you over the next couple of weeks to have individual conversations, to really delve into these and kind of give you an appreciation for the types of issues that these, these things are going to raise. So if that's acceptable to you, we'll be reaching out and start that process. James?
Yeah, if it's acceptable to Chris and Mary Alice, I, I'll be okay with that.
And I think Mary Alice and Chris might want to say something too.
Yeah, we've already said, we do agree with this process. We do want to invite the police staff and we want to invite everybody in help crafting a good policy. And so, yeah, I'm supportive.
Yeah, no, I'm, I think it would be great to be able to have, everybody have an opportunity to think through some of these things. I, I was very transparent in that I know that there's lots of things that I'm not thinking about as I try and list some of these items. So just so that everybody knows, what I did was really go through, talk with Chris about what his, some of his concerns were, some of the items that he wanted to address. As we talked about with technology before, that's, that can mean a lot of different things. So I really focused on reusing military equipment, facial recognition and surveillance as the types of technologies that maybe the public and city council should be more aware of if we do have new programs that use those types of things. We also talked a little bit about different kinds of, of programs, and that one's a little trickier. We kind of came down on two things. One was gang databases, and the second one was collaboration with ICE. And so when I had a conversation with the chief about that, he mentioned to me that there's actually a state law that says that we cannot collaborate in deportation with ICE. Now, of course, ICE does more than just deportation, but I think that that is primarily what the concern was when Chris and I were talking about. So those are just some ideas that I had. I think it's great to have more city council members and also all the different kinds of department heads and staff who would have knowledge in terms of operationally, what does this mean? Does this make sense for us to define something this way? Is it understandable to everybody? So that's the quick background in terms of what Chris and I worked on.
Grace?
Thanks. Thank you for the update on this. I appreciate it being on here in a timely manner and the draft that's been made and that this is something that needs more time. So I appreciate having more input. I'd be happy to throw in my thoughts as always on anything. And the, my only concern, I guess, would be with the individual conversations. And I'm wondering why not just have it at a regular meeting, a council meeting, a special meeting. It seems, yeah, just not, I'm wondering why we'd have those individually.
Just trying to make it a more efficient process. And when, I think when we sit down and talk and start to go through some of this, you'll understand why. So we're trying to make this more efficient to get a lot of stuff done as groundwork and then bring it to council for a full discussion.
Thank you. And if I may, then I think, I think we've had, we covered a lot of things on at least the initial stuff. I don't quite understand yet what I don't understand about the complexities, but I think we laid out some things in the meeting. And I appreciate the list of technology and programs. I think for me, something I would add would be program, like responder changes, like we talked a lot in that discussion about the CCRT follow-up co-responder model and that not being voted on. And so I think that that's something, what I, when I think of programs, to also consider something that would be a major operational change in the restructuring of that, that would be something to come before council for approval. Thank you.
Sure. Well, we're looking forward to, to the discussions and hearing what everyone has to say. And we'll be reaching out over the next couple of weeks. Okay. We'll move on to new business. First item there is ordinance number 2022-07-029, which is an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat for South Ridge 9 subdivision, Plan Case 2448-S-22. Go ahead, Kat.
Thank you. This is Plan Case 2448-S22. Oh, got the wrong notes. All right. This is a request by Kevin Moduland, Jason Dodds and Tim Jefferson for approval of the final plat of the South Ridge 9 subdivision. Preliminary and final plats can be considered for concurrent approval. On June 23rd, 2022, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to approve the preliminary plat and forward the final plat to city council with a recommendation of approval, including the submitted waiver. Staff concurs with the Plan Commission recommendation. This is a location map of the property. The subject property was part of the Douglas Farm, annexed to the city in 2001. It is in the South Ridge neighborhood located on the south, or south of Windsor Road and east of Philo Road. The property is approximately 7.5 acres and would be divided into 28 lots to be developed for single-family houses. City council approved plats for subdivision phases 5, 6 and 7 in May of 2001. City council also approved a combined preliminary final plat for South Ridge 8 last year in May. The proposed final plat would subdivide the last remaining tract of the South Ridge neighborhood. This is a zoning map of the property. It's zoned R2, single-family residential. There is R2 and R3 zoning to the north and east and county agricultural zoning and uses to the south and west. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the requirements for the R2 zoning district, and it would be a continuation of the existing residential uses on the south side of Urbana. This is a future land use map of the property. The comprehensive plan shows this area as residential suburban pattern, and the proposed subdivision would be consistent with that designation. These are a few site photos of the property. It's a north-south tract, and this is the stub of Melissa Lane looking south. This is looking east, southeast into the property. There are houses along Deer Ridge Drive that you can see in this photo, and then Philo Road to the west. This is looking north on Melissa Lane toward the houses on Mark Ridge, or Mark Trail Drive, sorry. The 7.5 acre parcel would be divided into 28 lots on the east and west sides of the extended Melissa Lane. The proposed subdivision does not require a traffic impact analysis, and the city engineer does not anticipate any access or congestion issues. The applicants have requested a waiver to allow the Melissa Lane and Hillshire Drive extensions to be paved to a width of 28 feet, where a minimum width of 31 feet is required. This would match the width of Hillshire Drive and all existing streets in the neighborhood as a waiver was received when South Ridge 5, 6, 7 and 8 were platted. The waiver includes a condition that street parking would only be permitted on the south side of Hillshire Drive to allow more room for emergency access. This is the preliminary plat that was approved by Plan Commission, and this is the final plat that's being considered tonight. To summarize, 7.5 acres of the subject property would be subdivided into 28 single-family residential lots. The proposed preliminary and final plats are consistent with the zoning designation, R2. The plats are consistent with the comprehensive plan, and they meet the requirements of the Urbana Subdivision and Land Development Code with the exception of one requested waiver. The requested waiver would not be harmful to other properties or negatively impact the public health and safety of the community. On June 23rd, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on the case. Three members of the public spoke regarding the case. They had questions about the planned grading and drainage for the proposed lots on the east and west sides of Melissa Lane. There was some concern about stormwater runoff for the proposed lots flooding from these properties onto Deer Ridge Drive, or onto properties along- properties onto Deer Ridge Drive, or onto properties along Deer Ridge Drive. Urbana Public Works has reviewed the preliminary and final plats for South Ridge Nine, and an engineering review will take place after the lots are subdivided. As shown on the plat, the lots will be graded to direct stormwater runoff south toward Hillshire Drive and east toward the existing detention basin that was part of the earlier phases of the subdivision. There will also be drainage installed between the houses on the east side of Melissa Lane and the west side of Deer Ridge Drive to catch stormwater runoff that would run between the two lots. Mark Miller and Kevin Modulyn should be here tonight to answer any engineering questions as the applicants. Following the discussion, Plan Commission voted with five A's and zero nays to forward, or to approve the preliminary plat and forward the final plat and requested waiver to city council with a recommendation to approve the final plat of for South Ridge Nine, including the requested waiver to reduce the street width from 31 feet to 28 feet, with the condition that on-street parking, if provided, only be provided on the south side of Hillshire Drive. The city council has the following options for Plan Case 2448-S22. Approve the proposed final plat, including the requested waiver. Approve the final plat excluding the requested waiver, or deny the final plats. If denied, council should state reasons for denial. Staff concurs with the Plan Commission recommendation, and I can take any questions for staff. The applicants are also here to make a statement.
Would they like to make a statement now? Or are they here to answer questions?
Do you want to make a statement now?
I'm just here to answer.
Sounds good.
Okay. Are there questions for the applicant or for Kat? James?
Hi, yes. My first question is, on this plat, it does not seem to have South Ridge Eight on the location map, and I'm wondering why that was left off if we've already approved that.
Our CCGIS is updated periodically. The aerial is updated every three years. I believe this was pulled from CCGIS, so it's possible that it was pulled before they were added.
So I shouldn't take that as an indication that this is going to be done before the other ones?
No, the other one is finalized, the ordinance was recorded, and construction's going on now.
So I recall our discussion about that, which it lasted a while. I also recall not being satisfied with the request for the waiver because Hillshire Drive is the south, I'll call artery, I don't know if that's a word, but access to the subdivision. My recollection of that conversation of granting that waiver was that this wasn't very close to happening, and Hillshire Drive was going to be still a quiet street for some time to come, and that's one of the reasons why we should be okay with it being narrower. So seeing this now and seeing the fact that it's going to be narrower, I understand that the parking restriction is going to help with that, but having a few streets and not even the words that are, seem to be too narrow for what's going on and parking is allowed, I'm uncomfortable with that. Am I recalling that conversation pretty well through?
Now I'm having trouble recalling it. I think part of the justification and what was included in the staff report was that narrower streets result in slower traffic speeds, which increases safety for the neighborhood. Because Hillshire Drive, for the most part, has been developed and platted in earlier subdivisions, including subdivision, or Phase Eight, I think the waiver in this case is justified by the fact that it has been granted in all of the earlier phases, and this smaller part should be continued to that same width.
Kevin, did you want to weigh in on this?
Not particularly at this moment, but if there's any, if there's any other questions. I mean, I will say with restricting it, so I just said that, but I'll weigh in. If there's parking only on one side, that typically takes out about eight feet, so you're still, you're still going to have two 10-foot lanes, essentially. There won't be a center lane striped there, but, I mean, 10-foot lanes is wide enough for some of our larger arterial streets, so I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any worry that it's not going to allow proper traffic flow. If that, was that your concern? Was that this was supposed to be to arterial level or something?
Well, I mean, in the picture, it looks like it's the main street for the south, if you want to enter that subdivision from the south. And when we were looking at Eight, that was my concern, that we were narrowing it before we were done with that part of it. That was my, that was why I asked that question.
Okay.
Grace?
Thank you. I, okay, questions first. Could you remind me how stop signs work? That's evaluated afterwards, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm not an engineer, so I don't know that process, but they evaluate those.
Okay. And I also had some, some questions, some concerns about the road width. I appreciate how it was explained in here, so I think some of those reasons make sense. I did take a, I live very close in this neighborhood and did take a stroll through there last night even and was, you know, looking at cars parked on the street and the other ones, and I would say that two cars could safely pass with punts parked on that one side of the street. And I think in this neighborhood, it does make sense too, since it's a single-family residential, and every house has a driveway and garage parking, so I think that that does make sense. Getting back on point, a question I had, I don't know if I want to, for the applicant, maybe, was about connection of Hillshire Drive to Philo Road as it relates to construction, if that would be done before or after construction of the homes? Because we have had some complaints from a lot of people in the neighborhoods about the construction traffic and it being all funneled through marked trails or Trails Drive, and so I would like your input on if or how you could connect to Philo Road and use Hillshire and Melissa Lane directly off Philo instead of driving all the way through the neighborhoods for this construction.
Yeah, the...
Could you please state your name for the record, too?
Yeah, my name's Kevin Modulyn.
Okay.
And to answer your question, the connection to Philo Road would be made during the infrastructure improvements for Phase Nine before any residential building would occur in this phase.
So you're saying that that connection would be done for the streets before the house constructions?
Yes.
Okay. And then they would be planned to use that direct route on the new streets off Philo?
Yes, there would be access, you know, on Hillshire Drive from Philo Road.
Yeah, but I guess I'm asking if you have any control or connection with the actual construction, the people doing the work to ask them to, you know, if you're building a house right on that corner, to just go off of Philo right there instead of taking the roundabout way, which it seems like someone likely would anyway, but I'm wondering if you have any way to request that?
We can certainly, you know, ask the home builders to ask their people to enter through that, you know, that avenue to get onto the project. And I do know, like, in Phase Eight right now, what we've tried to do is start, start construction on the east side and work towards the west side. And so I know that the main home builder out there now has worked with the city to try to restrict access in the construction area and keep, you know, keep the traffic more in the area that has already been built up, so. So to answer your question, yes, we will do what we can to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that consideration, because again, I just have heard from neighbors that it is an issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chris?
This might be inappropriate, but I'm just curious, do you know the average cost to the houses, what they're going to be?
I do not. I mean, I think they're in the 260 range, something like that, but, you know, it depends on the type of home that somebody builds and how big they make it, that type of thing.
Any other questions? Someone ready to make a motion?
I'll move approval of ordinance number 2022-07-029, an ordinance approving a final subdivision plat, South Ridge Nine subdivision, Plan Case 2448-S22, for approval.
One second. Moved by Chandra, seconded by Jaya. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Harsy?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item under new business is ordinance number 2022-07-030, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Octapharma Plasma Donation Center, 222 North Broadway Avenue, which is Plan Case 2454SU22. It's a busy, busy night for Kat Trotter.
One more. All right. This is a request by Octapharma Plasma, Inc. for a special use permit to allow a plasma donation center at 220 North Broadway Avenue in the B4 Central Business zoning district. On June 23rd, 2022, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval, with the condition that six bicycle parking spaces are installed onsite. Staff finds that the case meets the special use permit criteria and therefore concurs with the Plan Commission recommendation. This is a location map of the site. It is approximately three acres located in downtown Urbana on the east side of North Broadway Avenue between East Water Street and University Avenue. It was formerly a Save-A-Lot grocery store, which closed in November of 2021. This is a zoning map of the property. It is zoned B4 Central Business. Plasma Donation Center is not specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. The most closely related use is considered to be a hospital or clinic, which is allowed in the B4 zoning district with a special use permit. The adjacent properties are zoned B4 Central Business and B4E Central Business Expansion. That's that pink color over here. The future land use designation for the site is Central Business, and the Plasma Center use generally, is generally consistent with that designation. This is another aerial of downtown. The special use permit would allow for an Octapharma Plasma Donation Center to operate in 12,000 square feet of the existing 31,500 square foot building. The building has been vacant since November 2021, when Save-A-Lot closed. A few more aerials. This is looking north. The Plasma Center would operate from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days per week. The applicants anticipate that there will be 25 to 30 employees onsite with two shifts each day. They also anticipate an average of 1,500 procedures per week or 215 procedures per day on average. At most, 42 employees and donors would be in the facility at a given time. There are 147 parking spaces onsite, and the applicants anticipate that up to 43 spaces will be used by the Plasma Center's employees and donors on a daily basis. The applicants would install new bicycle parking, adhering to the desired walkability and bicycle friendliness of downtown. These are some site photos that were taken back in June. I don't think the horrible bike parking spaces are shown in here, but they are onsite. And this is the overhead doors that will be used by Octapharma. This is a general site plan from an Octapharma Plasma facility in Texas. Staff finds that the application meets the three special use permit criteria. The site is in downtown Urbana and is accessible by major roadways, North Broadway Avenue to the, to the west, and North Vine Street to the east. There are sidewalks along Vine and Broadway and an MTD bus stop on the east side of North Broadway Avenue. No changes will be made to the footprint of the existing building, and the employees and donors would use the existing parking lot. The facility would operate from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days per week, which is similar to other uses in the area, like Schnucks and Starbucks to the east. The building is vacant, and the new use would occupy a relatively small part of an underutilized site in downtown Urbana. It does not seem that the use will be detrimental or injurious to the district or the public. This is another photo from another Octapharma Plasma Center, really just here to provide a visual of their signage. Staff published a legal ad in the News Gazette to notify the public of the request and public hearing 15 days prior to the Plan Commission. Staff also sent letters to 24 neighboring property owners notifying them of the request and posted a public hearing sign on the property. We did not receive any public input. On June 23rd, 2022, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on this case. The Plan Commission discussed the requested special use permit, and the applicant made a statement on behalf of the case. No members of the public spoke at the meeting. The Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval, with the condition that six bicycle parking spaces will be installed City council has the following options on the requested special use permit. Approve the ordinance to approve the special use permit as requested. Approve the ordinance with additional conditions deemed appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare, and to carry out the purpose of the city's municipal code, or deny the ordinance. If the city council elects to do so, it should articulate the findings supporting its denial. As written here, "On June 23rd, the Plan Commission voted with five A's and zero nays to forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval, with the condition that six bicycle parking spaces are installed in conformance with Section 8.7 of the Urbana zoning ordinance." Staff concurs with the recommendation. The applicants are here to make a statement, and I can take any technical questions.
Before we begin with questions, we'd invite the applicants to come and speak, if you wish. And you can, you can unhook that or just pull that rope away from the wall. You don't have to climb over it. Please state your name for the record. Make sure the green light's on your microphone.
Yes, my name is Kerry Klisch. I represent Octapharma Plasma. Our, you've heard all the information on what our plans are. So this Save-A-Lot building, we will be taking approximately 12,000 square feet, and our potential landlord is in talks with other businesses to take the remainder of that building. I'm not sure where he's at with, with those talks, but as part of the build-out, an agreement in our lease, the entire parking lot is going to be resurfaced and restripped, trim all the overgrown vegetation, the, in the parking islands and all of that, and refurbish the loading dock. So you saw there was two loading docks, so we won't use two. One's for us and the other one will be for the other business, whoever goes in there. Loading dock's also going to be refurbished. And I also wanted to kind of address what else we do. So we're, we will be, we signed about, we signed a 10-year lease. We're here long-term. We invest about 100, 1.5 million just in the construction costs, so we basically will gut that 12,000 square feet and build it back to our standards, which is about 1.5 million, and then we invest another, over, over another million dollars for outfitting, furniture beds, stocking, and all of that. So we're, we're into it for a good amount of money before we even open our doors. And we, we bring jobs to the community, and each of our donor centers get involved with the local community. They do at least one outreach per year, whether it's a They do at least one outreach per year, whether it's a coat drive, a food drive, or habitat for humanity, whatever it is that the local community kind of embraces, and they'll get with that. Because our employees are, we hold job fairs, local job fairs. Our employees are local. And so between wages, approximately two million dollars a year, and donor fees, approximately three point five million dollars a year, roughly, it's over five million dollars per year that's going right back into the community. We do not pay cash. We pay our donors on a prepaid debit card. And we know where the money is going when they're spending it, and eighty to eighty-five percent of our donors' fees are going right back to the community. So they're buying groceries, they're getting gas, they're getting the car fixed, they're paying the cell phone bill. They're supplementing their income through the donor fees. I can't think of anything else. We're just, we're very happy to be here. We wanna, we're here long-term, and we're excited to be able to have a new Plasma Center here in Urbana. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions? Chris?
Okay, welcome to Urbana. Where does the blood go? Or the plasma? Like, are you selling, is it, is that going to our hospitals?
So the plasma that we collect goes to our parent company in Europe, Octapharma A.G. They make medicines from the plasma through a, and called fractionization plant. So we make medicines for hemophilia, AIDS patients, trauma, organ transplant, women's RH factor. If the fetus's blood type is not compatible with the mother's, we can, we make a medicine so that the mother can deliver a healthy baby. And many diseases that you've never heard of, that I can't even pronounce. Basically, any blood type disease, we make medicines for. Those medicines are distributed globally to a hundred and twenty countries. There's also an Octapharma USA in Hoboken, New Jersey, and they are the North American distributor of the medicines.
Okay. Are there medical staff on-site at this to deal with the dizziness or the, you know, people complaining of sores and things like that?
Absolutely. We, each of our donor centers have got a doctor, not particularly in the, in the building. It depends on what the state laws are. But there is a doctor connected to every donor center, whether it's a rotating basis or an on-call type thing. Their nurses or nurse practitioner, plus the staff themselves are trained in different medical, can't think of the term.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, you're gonna do some medical services at the facility that you're at. Would you be also, for serious situations, sending them with, you know, reference to the local hospital?
Well, if there's, if there's an incident, that it's just like any other business, we call nine-one-one, call an ambulance, an ambulance to come in and assist. Yes.
Would you say that most of your donors are poor people?
I would say a majority of our donors are at lower income, and they are, absolutely, they are donating plasma to supplement their income, to pay those extra bills. We have some of our, actually, some of our staff and some of our donor centers started out as a donor. Our Ypsilanti Michigan Center, one of our assistant managers started as a donor, donating plasma to make money to pay for college books. And now he is one of our assistant managers there, so.
Last question. Is there a limit to how often you can donate?
Absolutely. So we are, we're regulated only, not just by the FDA, but by the European Union, and the plasma industry is self-regulated by the PPTA, which I can never remember what that stands for. It's Plasma, Plasma Protein Therapeutics Association. And you can donate, so plasma is the liquid part of your blood, carries the antibodies and stuff, that's the good stuff to make medicines, right? And your body can naturally replenish that within forty-eight hours. So when a donor comes in to donate, so their whole blood is put into a machine, a machine called plasma, through a process called plasma ferresis, kind of like a centrifuge. It separates the plasma from the blood. We extract the plasma, and the blood goes back into the donor. And when they're done donating, then a bag of saline, they get a bag of saline to help boost them, and then in forty-eight hours, you're back to normal for your plasma. And we are limited to, you can donate every two days, but maximum of twice a week. That's the maximum that you can donate.
Sharice.
Okay, so you're saying, I'm just trying to get an idea of how this works medically. When someone donates their blood, it goes through a centrifuge or some, almost something like a dialysis, something to separate the plasma from the red blood cells? And you said, and the red blood cells go back to the donor? So they get packed blood, packed red blood cells, basically? They just, they get the cellular part of the, of their, of their blood, not the plasma?
Correct. The liquid part, we separate the liquid part, and we're, that's what.
And then you hydrate them with?
And they get hydrated with saline.
With saline?
Yeah.
What if, it would, okay, and I have to ask this question. If a person has high blood pressure, saline, would you take blood from that person?
There's.
Because I'm thinking saline.
They go through, so they have to be screened every time that you donate. And it is, it is, how are you feeling today? And it's very similar to giving blood, except giving blood, you can only give, I think, every twenty-eight days or something, I don't.
I've never been able to give blood because I'm anemic, so.
So, you know, one of the things you do when you donate blood, they're gonna check your iron level, and they say, and it happens to my wife every time, I'm sorry, your iron level's too low, go eat some, some iron-rich food and come back. So we make a hematocritic reading. We take that, which is the level of the red blood cells. If that is wrong, we say, sorry, you cannot donate today. They don't feel good if they have a new tattoo. All of these type of things as a whole, not only questions that they have to answer about how they're currently feeling and have they got a tattoo or permanent makeup or anything, those type of things recently, but also then they, they're getting the vitals taken, the height, the weight, her hematocritic reading and all that, blood pressure and all that.
Do you find that most of your clients are honest about their physical, about their, how they feel physically, or even about their medical background, their medical history?
I think, I think so. I think so. And again, it's, you've got, you know, you, you could, you have to trust people so much and that, but then also there's taking the readings and everything.
And generally, when someone donates or sells their blood, is basically what they're doing, what is the payment? What's the remuneration?
It varies across the country, and I don't even know what they, I'm sure they have not even set the donor fees yet for this area.
Is it based on, is it based on the median income of the area, or do you have any?
No, it's similar to when a Shell station goes in across the, across the intersection from Exxon station. It is, what's, what's the competition doing in that area? Or maybe it's, they may do a boost, to boost the donor base.
Okay, because we do have a plasma place on Lincoln, Cad Plasma?
Right, you have a Cad Plasma.
Yes, so you're basically saying that your, your, your payment would be somewhat competitive with what theirs is?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So going back to, was it Clad Plasma? Is that what? Cad, Cad, Cat? Is it Cat Plasma? Sorry. Is there a way that you know if somebody has donated at another facility that's not operated by you?
Correct, yes, there is. So donating, Plasma Centers are, when you, when you, even though we're in competition, we're also together in this. So for one thing is, you're correct, you, it's not good for somebody to donate at Octapharma Plasma, and then the next day go over to Cad Plasma, and then the next day go back to Octapharma. So when they donate, they're gonna mark a finger. So we will ask Cad Plasma, what finger is you marking? And it is an ultraviolet marking, so they may say the left pinkie. And we say, okay, well, with the right index finger, and that's part of the screening process, is they're gonna look, and if they see a Cad Plasma marking, it's a no, no, no. And also, if there's a thing called deferment. So a deferment would be, like I say, when you come in and get screened, and let's say that person's not feeling well, or one of their readings are too low, so they get deferred for that day. I know it's today's your day to donate, but your reading's not correct, so you're deferred, come back, this is when you could come back. Well, another type of deferment is a permanent deferment. If they are positive for, say HIV or something along that line, that's a permanent deferment. That gets into a national database that is accessed through the PPTA by all plasma companies. So when somebody's permanently deferred for something like that, they can't just go to one of the other Plasma Centers. Their blood plasma is not, not good for making medicines.
All right, okay. And then you touched upon this, you listed a lot of different regulatory places, the EU, the state, and so forth. Who is responsible for the personnel in terms of how many different kinds of people you might need on-site in order to carry out this type of service? And then also, who is responsible for the number of times that, that cap that you said, two per week? Which regulatory body?
The, our state licensing is what is going to drive what the makeup is of the employees. In other words, whether you have to have, for instance, we are looking at getting into the state of New York. They're very, very restrictive in what they require, and I believe one of the requirements is to have MD on-site twenty-four, you know, a whole, anytime you're open, which is extremely restrictive. Whereas, so it's up to the state. The state dictates. We have our minimums that we do, but the state may put further restrictions on there to get licensed, to get our laboratory license, we call it. And then, like I said, the PPTA is our self-governing association, and it is, there is no Plasma Center in the United States that you can donate plasma more than two times per week.
But it sounds to me like that's not a state regulation, that's a self-regulation group. Is that correct?
Right, the PPTA, yes.
Okay. Is there a cap on the amount of times that you can donate per month or per year, or is it just per week?
No, it's just, it's just the per week.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Shandra?
So what's, the other plasma place has come up. It's about a mile away from the Save-A-Lot site that you're proposing. Is the demand really that high for another place to be within a mile?
I, it is, or we wouldn't, I wouldn't be sitting here talking with you all. Yes, it is. It's a, it's a very competitive business, and there are Plasma Centers opening daily almost, with all the plasma companies expanding, but.
Yes, I've read a bit of research about the plasma growth in the last ten years, and it has been significant, mainly in disadvantaged census tracts. And with that having been a Save-A-Lot previously, we know that that, you know, sort of is a grocery store frequented by those folks on the lower socioeconomic status. And so I'm, it makes me wonder, like, would that be a little sort of taking advantage of those folks already in a desperate situation? And you put this center in there for them to, you know, don't, I've read a lot of articles and things about how people are using it to supplement their unstable income, and I just don't, much like, you know, gaming houses and stuff, like, I don't want to put something in our community that's, could be a detriment. I mean, physically, no, maybe not, but just overall, ethically, morally. So I'm just, just wondering, I know, it's a business. Do you know, I know Champagne has a couple Plasma Centers also. It just, it seems like, are we inviting too many into our community? I guess I don't have a question with that, just some sort of thoughts. I'll leave there.
James?
Yeah, I happen to know someone who started becoming a Plasma donor not very long ago at one of the Champagne locations, and their donation for their initial and first several donations was about a hundred dollars a time. Does that sound like the kind of range that you guys would be in?
Probably. They, usually the new donors get a little more money than a recurring donor.
I was gonna say, the other thing about the situation was that that rate was only available to them if they gave during the first forty days or something like that. Is that a common practice to have a higher?
It is common to have a higher donor fee for new donors, and then, and then once they're a reoccurring donor, there's other bonuses they hit. They hit so many donations in a month, or, each center is different in how they market.
Okay, so I guess I don't, I don't understand if it's market-driven, based on, like, you mentioned a gas station, wouldn't the value of the plasma be the same each time you gave?
Well, it's gonna vary, no, because it's gonna vary, whether it's at Urbana, Illinois or downtown Chicago.
But I mean, from a standpoint of having an incentive program that pays more at the beginning and then less after they're an established donor, why wouldn't they continue to get the same amount when they started out?
I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
What effect does drugs and alcohol have on the plasma? Do you take that kind of plasma? I mean, if I were an alcoholic or a drug addict, this would be a great way to keep my income going.
So we test for many things. So when a donor donates the plasma, they have to take samples of that plasma, that gets sent to a laboratory, and it's run through tests, and it has to come back clean. When it comes back clean, then that plasma is marked safe for shipment and use for, for making medicines.
So they wouldn't get paid if it?
No, they get paid. You, because the test, a donor gets compensated for their time. When they come in and donate, they're compensated for their time. When they leave the front door, that money is on their card.
Okay.
It's already charged on their card. Now, if the samples come back and it's bad, then that person gets permanently deferred, they're not gonna be coming back to donate again.
Oh, I see, they get banned.
Right.
Jaya?
Just have a technical question, because I think.
Just have a technical question, 'cause I think there are clearly a lot of questions about this one, of why this one came to council and not to the committee of the whole first?
Yes, because this use is going into an existing building, there's no new construction affiliated with it. It came straight to council.
Grace?
Thank you. Um, and so you said you would, this proposal is for part of the building, it's not the whole?
Correct.
And, um, why this location in particular?
Why this location? This particular location was brought to us by our landlord in downtown Chicago. He said, "I've got an opportunity in Urbana," presented it to us, and we ran the numbers and, and decided, "Yeah, that's, that's a good location. We will, uh, like to pursue that with you."
And one of my questions was about the donor fees or payments, and I think we've established that it's, um, not set. Kind of depends on competitive rates. Is that right?
Correct.
And, um, also another question was about locations close by, which, just to reiterate, I think we talked about, and I was mapping some, some on Lincoln Avenue in Urbana, and then also on University, very close by, maybe in Champaign. And then it looks like quite a few in Champaign. I didn't know if anyone else had other information on existing plasma centers.
The only other one in Urbana is the KED Plasma on Lincoln Avenue. I know there are several in Champaign, but I don't have their locations off the top of my head.
James?
I can tell you that there's one across the street from Custer Cup in Champaign. That's the one I'm aware of.
Any other questions? Grace?
I'd do a motion if we were ready to entertain a motion.
Sure, go ahead.
I would like to, motion to, um, move ordinance number 2022-07030, an ordinance approving special use permit, Octapharmacy Plasma Donation Center, 22 North Broadway Avenue, Plan Case 2454, SU 22, back to Committee of the Whole.
A second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Jaya, to move this item to Committee of the Whole, which would be in two weeks. Is there discussion? Mary Alice?
I just would like to know from Councilmember Grace, why? What's the rationale for moving it back to Committee of the Whole?
It's next week, actually, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's in just a week. Ah, time's going so fast. Um, I need some more information and time about this, which I think may be sounding a little repetitive. Um, but I think with the health concerns, um, and just the industry dynamics, the locations, the personal experiences, I think there's a lot of things that I need some time to fully read and dive into and, um, consider in this decision. I have some concerns about the location. Um, it definitely doesn't feel right to me to, um, you know, I don't, I know that we don't have direct control over the grocery store closing, but it doesn't feel right to have a grocery store, um, converted into a plasma center in this area so close to the existing one, close to one in Champaign. Um, it seems like we're, like, making a plasma ghetto here along University Avenue, and I have concerns about that, and I think it's a big decision. Um, I see some, you know, interesting points on the economic development opportunities for the city. Um, and I also have concerns about how it impacts the public. And interestingly, no one's been holding us to these three criteria for this special use permit, as opposed to some of the previous ones tonight. Um, but I think that there are still, for me, questions unanswered about how this could be injurious to the public in the operations of it.
Well, if we had a motion here, you would've heard my three comments about those items. Um, I, I guess my, I mean, I'm ready to make a decision, a, or yea or nay. But I guess my big question is, what is staff supposed to bring us at the Committee of the Whole to help other people make a decision?
I was about to ask, what are the specific items that you want staff or the applicants to provide you next week that you don't have this week?
Um, I would like information on how plasma centers impact communities, some of the positives and negatives. Um, I don't necessarily expect staff to provide that for me. Um, I feel like I can easily explore that issue and read some things on my own, so I don't expect staff to provide that. Um, but if they would like to, I would be open to that.
Possibly the applicant as well. Be in better position to do that. Are there any other questions? James?
I'm, I'm curious, um, what happens if a motion to send it back to committee fails?
Then you proceed to the vote as to whether or not you want it to pass or fail tonight.
We would wait, we would need a subsequent motion in that case?
Yes.
Motion on the floor is to send it to committee. Shandra?
Sorry, this may have, I should've asked this question earlier, but how, how long has KED Plasma been there? Do you know offhand?
That one was approved by City Council, I wanna say about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago.
So?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the case number was, uh, 2019, so.
Okay.
Three years.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe one and a half or two years, something like that.
So, um, I guess, do we know how it's doing, how it's, I, I assume it's still open and thriving, like?
And we've, we've heard nothing from the planning side. Usually, I take that as a good sign.
Say something about observing.
Yeah.
Um, um, 'cause I drive down Lincoln Avenue quite a bit. It's not like, um, I've seen, like, you know, the parking lot overflowing, or a lot of people lined up, or anything like that. It just looks like a regular medical facility that people go to, to, um, to do whatever they're doing. It, it appears to be, um, well-received by the neighborhood, 'cause it's right over by King Park.
Mm-hmm.
So it, um, I haven't seen any, anything, nor have I heard. No one has called to say anything to me about its negative impact, or anything like that, on the neighborhood.
Grace?
Just wanted to add too, that I think another little delay just also gives a little more time for that discussion, and for the public to kind of catch up. Um, I guess the media, the news already left, maybe they won't be advertising this issue as much as some other special use permits. Um, but I think it would be another opportunity for the public to have a little more time to express those things, 'cause I am really interested in, like Sharice was sharing, how the one we have has been received by the community, and would love the opportunity to hear a little bit more about this issue.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. James?
Uh, I just wanted to say, I wanna, I, I'm gonna vote no on the motion to sit in to committee, 'cause I would prefer to go ahead and make the decision, uh, tonight. I, I do, I do have a concern about, um, we're talking about the, the second one. I do hear people's concerns about it, but I do wanna, I, I do wanna be careful not to, uh, preference one business owner over another business owner, um, for a use that has already been approved. If we, if we think that, um, plasma donation as a industry needs scrutiny on the municipal level, I, I would welcome a further conversation about that, but I, I think we can make this decision tonight. Thanks.
Any further discussion on this motion? I think we'll have a roll call vote on this, so it's clear.
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quizendary?
No.
So this motion fails. Uh, no is four, yes is three. So now we have an opportunity for another motion.
I would make a motion to approve, um, ordinance number 02022-07-030, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Octapharma Plasma Donation Center at 20, 220 North Broadway Avenue, Plan Case 2454, SU 22.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. Jaya?
So I, I think that question about the overall, um, impact of a, a plasma center in our, our community is one that I would've liked to spend more time on. Um, I don't think that I have enough information to, and, I know there are a lot of conversations in the last few weeks about what does it mean to be injurious to our community. I don't think that I have enough information at this point to vote yes or no. I think that we've, we've heard about the potential economic benefits, but I don't think we've had adequate time to review the potential, um, harm to the community, you know, based off of some of what's been shared tonight as well. So, um, I plan to vote present, but, um, would've liked to see this come to the Committee of the Whole, so we had more time to review this.
Further comments? Mary Alice?
All right, as I promised Grace, I go down the three criteria here. Um, number one, conducive to the public convenience at that location, I think it meets that criteria. I'm gonna jump number two for a moment. The proposed use conforms to the applicable regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the district in which it shall be located, which is before. Um, I think it meets that criteria. Uh, number two, which is the one that we keep talking about tonight, which is the public welfare. Um, the regulations for this are primarily state, um, in terms, they're the people who tell us, who allow the businesses to know exactly what they need in order to operate it, to keep it safe for the public. Right, that's the whole purpose of regulation. Um, in terms of public welfare in the actual area outside of it, I don't think this is injurious. I personally have something that I, I don't like plasma centers. I'm gonna vote present on this, and that's my rationale.
Further comments? Shandra?
I, I didn't vote to put it back into committee, because, um, I don't, I don't support, um, an additional plasma, um, place, uh, so close to another one. I mean, it, from Sharice's comment, it doesn't seem like the seams are busting for the, the other place. And so, um, much like a, a gaming hall, like, we voted that down, because it can be injurious to the public. Um, and I, I think that this is sort of a low-hanging fruit for, for those people who are, are desperate and are, um, not on the best footing. And, and I don't think this is, is sort of a, I don't know, a, a weird way out for them. And I, I don't want to see, you know, people donating bodily fluids to support their lives. Like, we have to come to a better solution than that as a, as a world, really. Um, so that's why, you know, I, I decided not to put this back to council, because I, I know my, my answer.
James?
Yeah, um, my, what I've heard tonight is that the allowance for this is under the interpretation of, um, this business district allowing for hospitals or clinics with special use, and that this is, um, considered a, a use under that. That's how it's been done the one time before and this time now. And I'm gonna suggest that that's, that's insufficient. And the reason why I'm gonna say that's insufficient for me to vote yes on this is because if you propose a hospital or a clinic, there is a regional authorization that looks at that construction and determines whether the capacity or the needs in the community, um, would, would fit into it. That has to be done, right? There's nobody doing that from this perspective. And so I'm gonna vote no, um, because I don't technically agree that the assessment of whether, uh, this business is needed and the capacity for the region, um, has an unmet need, uh, and that, and that's the reason why.
Further comments? Sharice?
I'm gonna say it, I'm gonna probably vote present. Based, based on this, um, I, I would like, I would've liked more information, but I also, the KED Plasma is in my, my ward. The, but the other thing is that I would, I also, uh, think in terms of the fact that I know that you, you deny people that, um, you know, if, if their health is not up to par, and so on and so forth, but they can, they show up, you know, and get that initial, that initial, um, uh, workup. But the other thing is that I would, I would've hoped that if you found something that might be injurious to them, that they, you might recommend that they go see a doctor, or something like that. And, and the other thing is that it is close to our township. And our township, um, building really helps a lot of homeless people. And I know that for a fact, 'cause I used to shop at Save-A-Lot as well. And I know that, you know, a lot of, of these people would go to that, to that area to, um, to get cheaper goods, had a great assortment of beans and processed meats and so on. And I, and I'm, and I don't know, but I assume as well, that some of these people would also go to try to get extra income, and probably be turned down. And that is not, that just, it's, it's not helpful. It's not necessarily hurtful, but it's not, also not helpful. It's not edifying. Otherwise, I really don't have a problem with your business itself, because I know hemophiliacs. So I know what plasma does, I know what it, what it provides. I, I would just have liked to have more information about your particular business. Like, your Octapharma, what it does, what it says, some kind of layout, some kind of something that would've, that would've helped, that would've helped me no more. Thank you.
If, I apologize, counsel. Um, if I could interject. It seems to me that many of you, while you did say that you did not want a meeting of Committee of the Whole, there are multiple questions and numerous questions you've asked. If it would help to table, so then we can come back with some more information that would make you more comfortable about Octapharma, um, that would help your decision, and then I would ask that we table this, so that we can bring you more information. Because I do believe that, that I'm getting mixed comments here of people who are saying that they can't make a decision based on the information they've been provided, yet at the same time, I've got counsel who is saying that, that the standards, the three criteria, which is what you need for the special use permit, have been met. And yet, I'm hearing some council members who are saying I'm gonna vote no, because I don't have enough information.
Is that directed at me, or just anybody? Um, for me, it, and it's only, I, I guess because I'm, I'm, I'm definitely going based on how, um, um, the other plasma place came to us. And they, they talked with people in the community, they, uh, had a presentation, they gave us a lot of information, 'cause, uh, they also have, um, places all over the world. And at first, to be honest, I wasn't particular about it, because I also know the reputation of plasma and blood donation places. Um, and I do recognize that you'll be hiring people from the community and all that, and I would've liked to have had some more information on your particular company as well.
Can I just make one point? Uh, we did discuss a neighborhood meeting. We did discuss a neighborhood meeting. This particular property is different from the one that KED Plasma's on, because of its location in downtown, away from residential uses for the most part. That was the rationale behind not having a neighborhood meeting here. I would also say that medical clinics and hospitals require a special use permit in every district in which they're allowed. If we considered this a business use, which it's, could be compared to a business use, it would likely be allowed in the B4 Central Business District without additional zoning approval.
Grace?
Thanks, just wanted to address the point brought up by the applicant about tabling. I think that procedurally, we're past that point for now, and we're going to vote final decision, yes or no. But also, my understanding is that an applicant can reapply, is something we've discussed, we clarified last week. If it is rejected, then they can come back with more information if they're interested in reapplying, is that right?
That's correct. I feel like that's a bit onerous of an ask, so if there is a procedural way to table it, if that's the way the wind's blowing, I would suggest that.
Point of order, I think a motion to table.
Table will kill it, so. A table leaves, leaves it on.
You can, you can put it on the table to a specific time.
If you table it, you have to come back and make your decision before you leave tonight. You can't table to another day.
Okay.
Yes? Uh, were you one of the ones who voted no?
Yep.
Yes. Yes, you may.
You're withdrawing your motion on the floor?
I don't have a motion.
Oh, I had the motion on the floor.
Sorry, I wasn't turned on. You have the motion on the floor.
Are you asking me to withdraw my motion on the floor?
Would you withdraw your motion on the floor?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Do you agree?
I withdraw the second.
All right. Mary Alice, did you have a motion?
I guess it was originally Grace's motion, but I'll make the motion, sure.
Grace, would you like to make that motion?
No, Mary, Mary Alice has to make the motion reconsider.
I have it, because I recalled it. All right, I will move ordinance number 2022-07-030, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Octapharma Plasma Donation Center at 220 North Broadway Avenue, Plan Case 2454 SU22, back to the committee of the whole next Monday.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is a second required for a motion to reconsider?
Yes. It's a motion. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Discussion on this. Jaya?
This, it was a valid question, I think we're, we're seeing that, but I think it is also worth addressing the fact that you're hearing different perspectives, because different council members interpret the information differently. So while it certainly, apparently, these mics are a little bit challenging. So just clarifying, that it is not unheard of, of different council members saying they need more or less or different information, right? We're all individuals, and so, that, that aspect, I think, is, is something to, to provide some clarification and reassurance for the public, that that doesn't mean there's something wrong with the process. Think it was certainly a worthwhile point to raise, that there, it might be beneficial to send it to the committee of the whole, but one person saying, you know, I've made my decision, yes or no, and other person saying, I need more information, doesn't suggest there's something wrong with the process. That's part of the reason we have the opportunity to review things, and, and then go forward from there, because different, different council members might need additional information or time.
Kat?
As far as further information goes, I think the applicants and I will put together information on how plasma centers impact communities. Is there anything else you'd like for next week?
Chris?
Could, is it possible to put a restriction that the business must employ or ban a resident, or is that too restrictive?
Kevin, has that ever been done?
I don't know, whatever, well, to answer your question, no, that's never been done that I, that I am aware of. But I would think that your criteria, sorry, your, any conditions would need to directly address one of the criteria that, yeah. I mean, so you couldn't ask for something that's just totally, yeah.
Well, I would, again, couch it into benefiting the public welfare.
Right.
And, you know, it would benefit Urbana residents. It's just an idea, I'm not, you know, going to die on that hill necessarily.
Any other specific information you need? Grace?
Uh, like I said, whatever is available of any public input or review of what's existing so far, or in other communities, I think would be helpful. Also, just procedurally, speaking to explain to maybe the applicants or the public, to my understanding, correct if it's not correct, is that the Plan Commission, or a lot of these commissions, they look at the logistics of the application based on those criteria. And then, when it comes to council, we're not repeating the exact same thing, and just looking at that criteria. We're representing the public that elected us here. And so, it's not uncommon that there might be something that passed unanimously through Plan Commission, and then people show up and they share how they feel about it, and some of their impacts, and it is our job to consider that, which is different than the staff and the commission that are just looking at the logistics of it. So I think that's also my understanding of what I think is sometimes not fully understood in this process, that we do have an obligation to consider the public, and not just look at the logistical space of the building, or things that people might be looking at already in their roles.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to send this item to committee of the whole, which will be next Monday. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
No.
Five ayes, two nays. The ayes have it, this will go to committee for next Monday. Thank you. Last item on the agenda are appointments. These are new members to our boards and commissions. We have two for the Arts and Culture Commission. Both are terms ending June 30th, 20, well, no, one is June 30th, 2024. This is Shorma Bianca Bailey. Her statement reads, "Music has been my therapy when life or school seemed challenging. I know I want to share this gift of therapy with others that will appreciate it. I believe serving on the board will be a great opportunity to do so. I have a create, I know I have a uniquely creative mind that can help design events and programs that parents, children, and the greater Urbana community would love and enjoy. Most importantly, I want to utilize this position to share art and musical opportunities with adults and children, and show them that anything is possible. Thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to working with the Urbana Arts Commission." The second nominee for the Arts Commission is Alicia Rodriguez. She's 34-year resident of Urbana, and she states, "I strongly believe that the arts, whether as a lover or maker of art, is important to all human beings. Sadly, the arts are not always easily accessible to all. Urbana's doing a lot to bring the arts to everyone. Over the years, I've seen how the city's public arts program have blossomed. I've been very happy about that. Programs have made the city more exciting and dynamic. I've always enjoyed walking, running, biking through Meadow Brook Park and encountering art everywhere, juxtaposed with the changing prairie grasses. I've also enjoyed the musical performance and programs sponsored by the city of Urbana. I believe it's important to do all that we can to promote artists, such as the park, sculptors, musicians, and other artists as much as possible. I'm interested in being part of this effort." For the Historic Preservation Commission, for a term ending June 30th, 2025, is Dennis Roberts. Quote, "While being an advocate for preservation, I'm also interested in adaptive reuse of older buildings downtown. I believe this is a way to incentivize property owners to reinvest in and maintain their buildings while honoring their property's architectural integrity. The historic downtown embodies the unique significance of our community as the county seat, and the legal center of our county's development, and its preservation needs to be honored as it continues to grow and become more vibrant." For the Sustainability Advisory Commission, a term ending June 30th, 2023, Luke Westocker. Luke is a PhD student in chemistry at the U of I. He states, "I hope to serve the city of Urbana on the Sustainability Advisory Commission by using my experience in science policy from the research I conducted in the United States, Germany, and India. I'm excited to contribute to my community and assist in our transition to a more sustainable economy that protects both our community members as well as our natural environment. I have five years left in my PhD program, during which I hope to volunteer my time and experience to help Urbana reduce its emissions while working hard to engage citizens in our efforts. I hope to build a career in science policy, and this opportunity would allow me to continue to pursue this passion for enacting real change and directly benefiting people's lives, something that my day-to-day technical research does not involve." And then finally, for the Tree Commission, for a term ending June 30th, 2023, Scott Dossett. He's a retired assistant professional scientist at the Illinois State Water Survey, and a 44-year resident of Champaign County. He states, "Having provided public input on the recent EMCOR tree issues, and after following a couple of other issues, like the new Lincoln Elm on East Main Street, and the ancient hackberry removal, I figured it might be time to try to help. Be, be with this committee," end quote.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to move for appointments ending June 30th, 2023, for the Sustainability and Advisory Commission, Luke Westocker, and for the Tree Commission, Scott Dossett, and for terms ending June 30th, 2024, Arts and Culture Commission, Shona Bianca Bailey, and for terms ending June 30th, 2025, Arts and Culture Commission, Alicia Rodriguez, and for the Historic Preservation Commission, Dennis Roberts.
Second? Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. James?
Can I speak to my motion?
You may speak to your motion.
Thanks, Dennis, for being here tonight. It always, I always like it when someone who's being appointed actually comes and shows up for it, so. Thank you for all of your service, and thanks for serving again. You knew what you were in for.
Any other comments? Oh my, we'll start with that end, Mary Alice, and lurk our way down.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say how much I appreciate the diversity of backgrounds, type of people. I, I think it's, it's a great pool of people to, to add to our commissions and boards, so this looks good to me. Thank you.
We still have some more vacancies, which we are still working on. Chris?
I just wanted to say, this will probably be the easiest vote I ever make on council, which is appointing Dennis Roberts to the Historic Commission. The guy has literally written the book on the history of Urbana, so, very appropriate. We're lucky to have him, and thanks for serving again, Dennis.
Grace?
Thanks, I had some questions, if that's okay. Didn't know if you know about Tree Commission, the number of members and number of vacancies?
Not off the top of my head, I don't.
And, do you know if the people on this list were notified of the appointment decision tonight?
They will be.
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, I appreciate Dennis being here also, but I, I think from what I recall on appointments, that I was not notified that it would be. So I'm saying, if, if we really want people to come and be present for it, it would probably be helpful to let them know that it's happening.
Oh, you're asking if they were notified it would be on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Usually, we try to, yes, and then after they're appointed, we, they receive a letter, an actual letter, giving them notice of their appointment. But normally, when they apply, we try to let people know. But we have 125 approximately seats on boards and commissions, and sometimes that might not happen, but normally, we try to. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Will all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.